The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, through liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'm first reminded to offer our condolences to the Lee family. Ed was a member of the Conservation Commission and unfortunately had the accident down on Route 10 with the bear. So our condolences to his family is years of service to the town are well known and well appreciated. And we'll move on. Finance Committee, joint meeting.
You guys have the projector set up?
No one sent anything to us?
I was told to put together a PowerPoint presentation from John. So we can either do that or if you guys have a color copier, color printer?
How long will it take us to set up the?
I'll just move that table?
Well, you can have, give us five minutes maybe?
That works.
Alright, meantime, we'll attend to other business for a moment. As far as the joint meeting or the meeting minutes, I would assume we'll take them home with us to review them and come back and do them the next time. Find out if there are any signatures. We have one bill warrant fourteen dash twenty for one million two hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-four cents.
Why is it one? I just wanted to look at them for a second. There must be a roof going on? Yeah.
We do have minutes pending from the last one. Communication. I guess we're just gonna point my feet over my shoulder. Alright, what don't we have? If it's not there, we can do it. Yeah, they were the last one. I think we had it last week. No, they didn't. They did not have these on. Sorry.
Alright.
I want you to hear us one thing, we're in the middle of a...
It'll take me a minute right here.
One hour, we'll miss out.
Can we make just black and white copies? Work, work, Derek?
No, four of the spreadsheets are all color coded. So I tried to, I originally set it up so we could break it up.
I make a motion to sign bill warrant fourteen dash twenty in the amount of one million two hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Second.
One favor.
Aye. Do you want to actually look at this? Try to find this? But Ed can't sign it.
That's the one signature.
Yeah, it's his sign.
Hey Derek, wondering if I can make some...
Oh, we have to go on the... Okay. Take my, take notes.
Are you done? Some are.
Derek threw through his shoulder. Well, they won't have this one.
Ready, ready?
Ready. Alright. So basically what we did is we took everybody's budget and we gave them each a tab out of a workbook in Excel. And this way we can email this out to the department head and they can work on their budget and put it right into the tab that they're working on. When they email it back to us, all we do is drop it in and it self-populates to the major, to the full budget sheet. When the department heads gets it, there's basically four sheets to it. And if you go to your print preview first and then look at the spreadsheet, you'll see these dotted lines here, which will show you the four separate sheets. And it's basically just, it's a basic spreadsheet. This first sheet just rolls all the information from the following three pages. The first page is an expense page, the next page is a wage page, and the next page is a revenue page. All of this data rolls up into the summary page, this summary page rolls up into the main budget page. This is a, this is the town accountant's budget. I don't know if you can read it, but basically, up here is your expenses. The town accountant has a couple of, I don't know if you can see it. I don't like it. An independent audit and accounting software support are two separate contractual contracts that they have. They're two separate accounts, so we put those in red and they're separated. If you, if the department head has any other contracts that they need to enter into that they know are coming into during the year, we leave it down so they get it dirty. Yellow spots here and then the accountant can make the decision whether to open up an account number for them. Bottom half is the revenue. If the department has any revenue comes in, the last line is just revenueless expenses. On the expense page, we talked about the contract services. Expenses are like trainings, meetings, office supplies, mileage, any dues. On the wages page, the town accountant only has two employees, town accountant and assistant accountant. Here they put their names in, their titles, how they're getting paid, what the rate of pay is, and the hours per week and the gross pay. One thing I did want to mention on the expenses page is we do have a voted and an expended column before the requested amount. And this is for the department head so they can put in what they had in last year and then how much they've expended in the first half of the year. This will give them some idea of how they're, how they're doing on each expense line and should gear them up into thinking, the thinking process of whether or not they're gonna need to have more money, less money, allocate it a little bit differently.
Derek, you're putting that in or we're putting it?
No, department head edit. That way we have it all in one spot. And you can, you know what you have the previous year voted. Again, because we only have like an expense item, some of the stuff the first year you may just know, oh, I was given five thousand dollars for expenses and you may not have broken it out.
Yeah.
The more you break it out, the better it is for you guys to review and to think forward as far as what you might need for next year. It also helps us take a look at what you had last year and what you're looking at for this year.
And I won't necessarily make different account numbers for all those different items. Like if you, under your expenses, like for instance mine, I have, you know, maybe seminars or contractual services or supplies. I don't necessarily break all those out in the ledger because it becomes very cumbersome and that's not the way that it was voted and I don't think we want to vote it that way because then you're, you're bound to that one.
Right. No, the contractual lines that are in red were basically for, we know we're gonna have an independent audit and we definitely want to encumber that for that purpose. But yeah, the expenses are just to get the departments thinking, okay, what do we have? What do we need going forward? The other benefit to this is that if, as we continue to use it every year, you're gonna have a snapshot of what you had the previous year. So if you know that you have, you know that you had those expenses last year, some might go away, you might get extra ones, but it's all there for your reference the following year.
So this is different than we've ever used before? This right here?
I think some departments saw it last year. I think the finance committee used it last year. They did a lot of the input.
And so we're hoping that if all the departments use the same process, then it will be smoother?
It'll be smoother, it's less administrative problems, less people transposing numbers. And the other thing is that for the town accountant's benefits, all the, all the account numbers have been verified. So when she's going to put it into the ledger, she won't have to worry their number is not correct. And revenue, some departments have revenue, some departments don't. Most don't. So this is just out there just to keep it uniform, so it's always the same. I did do the police department budget as well, just to show they have more employees. Okay. So for instance, the police department, they do have a maintenance contract, which is contractual service. And they also have expenses like regional lockup and the TARA program, which are separate account numbers, which is why I see that in red. These are also different account numbers, all the other expenses that the chief has, follow those in account number. When we look at wages, basically of the department head line and then all of the patrolmen and the lieutenants and sergeants, what we did do on here is because the chief does have, he will have some overtime cost, some clerical, some stipends training. It's not really an expense, it's part of, part of his wages. So we just lump sum it, lump sum it in one line underneath the wages.
Overtime lump sum is in one line? For all the parties?
For all the parties involved. And it's just a way to try and budget that out as opposed to trying to, the spreadsheet gets longer than the hundreds we had in. And then wages, I'm sorry, revenues, you know, finance district court and police department details. Again, nobody has a crystal ball, they're not gonna know what they're gonna have for revenue. It's just a way to try and project based on last year's, based on what's happening. Obviously, the department head is gonna know far better where those revenues are gonna come from and how accurate they're gonna be. When this gets sent out, it is locked down only for the benefit, only for the benefit of keeping the integrity of the spreadsheets. If you add in columns, delete columns, add rows, delete rows, it doesn't roll up. So basically, when they get this, the best way to navigate with it is to use the slide bars, the arrows to move around the spreadsheet. And it will only allow you to enter into those cells that are unlocked. We do that, for instance, so that if there's, if somebody came in and changed this account number, town accountant would be, you know, going back and forth figuring out, trying to write an account number for that. So those are locked down, basically, so people don't inadvertently hit them and delete them or add numbers. But when you are on the spreadsheet, you're able, if you want to arrow, use the arrow keys or the enter key, it'll just go to the next available cell that you're allowed to put data into.
I have a question.
Sure.
So what software, what is this called? What company and what's the accounting system?
Just Excel.
Just Excel?
Just Excel.
Okay. Microsoft Excel.
Microsoft Excel. And if you, for some reason, department head is using it and they need to add in more lines or they need, or they know that they're gonna have a contractual service that's not listed and they've got an account number for it, call software, we'll know. We'll make the adjustments and get it back to them right away.
So this is gonna get emailed out to all departments?
All departments. Every single department has a budget. I think it's about thirty or forty pages on.
No, okay, I just, I feel like we're gonna question and answer for done.
Oh, okay. No, that's fine. Where's it going when he comes back?
Coming back to finance and then we'll put it all back into the main workbook and it should compile all the numbers.
But that's just, and that's obviously not a budget that's been renewed by anybody at that point in time, it's just a broad.
Broad data.
Broad data.
Correct. Once the finance committee goes through, puts it all together, they put the information together and send it out to the department heads.
Alright, well, that's a process we haven't discussed because since I've been here, we've just swung from one extreme to the other where the select board built the budget, we do the budget to the board, we ask the finance committee building the budget and going along. It's gone over the years from one extreme to the other, so we'll have to...
Well, we did the budget last year.
Right. No, that's what I'm saying.
So we're still continuing putting the budget together here this year?
Right. But in farther back in history, it was a select board, you know, that finance gathered the information and then we made the review, but we'll have to talk about that. We have, anybody have any questions?
I'm wondering, I'm wondering how the way the high school and the elementary school does their budget is going to fit with this program?
That's why I didn't pick those. Justin, at the moment.
Okay, 'cause that's a big part, that's our, that's the big part of our budget. So how can we fix this to help them?
We have spent, last, the last couple of years when we were doing the budget, we spent so much administration time that to try and sit down, and they are very complicated budgets. And it's, I wanted to put a lot of this administration time into letting the computer generate it so that we had time to sit down with the school departments to understand their budgets a little bit better.
And so you think this program's gonna help you understand better than the way that they format it now?
This, the way that, we just have to understand how they do their budget and go through the numbers with them. But it's always been very rushed and we've always had other things on our plate. I'm hoping that this is gonna take a lot of that administrative task off of us so that we can sit down and work closer with the school departments and go through their budgets.
Now, in our ledger, those two budgets are one-line items. It's elementary school and then there's vocational tuition, school choice tuition, which is all comes through, all comes from the state. And then you're gonna have the Hampshire Regional, which is based on their assessment, which is their big budget and they'll bill us, I think it's quarterly rate, is it quarterly? Yeah. And that's where that number comes from, but they will have detailed backup of how they put their numbers in there based on the DESI account numbers. So that's how they have to do their budget. And we can't necessarily transform that into ours, we just have that, that one-line item, but they will have to understand how they do it. But I can't, I could, but it's not really...
It's not feasible.
It's not feasible to put it in with all their account numbers under ours.
So is it fair to say that the department heads within town will use that program and then the schools will send us something separate?
Correct.
That they use themselves?
That's how we've done it before. And we still have the school departments in here and what we've done is, is under expenses, we have been broken out, you know, they have a budget that's happened, just think of paper. All we've done is put the one-line item in and have it roll into the budget. But the finance committee has met with them and understood the numbers. But this way is, again, we're not dealing with thirty-three other budgets. We can sit down, spend a little more time with the school.
Okay.
Because that's definitely one budget that I'd like to try and understand a little bit better myself.
Okay.
I just want to be sure that we're not rushed this year, man. I think that's one of the things that we hear. I think everyone needs to understand, we don't have the numbers any faster than you do as far as where we're going. If we can help to get some of the information into your template, we're happy, happy to do that using broad categories, but I agree that we're, we're breaking it into different lines and line item numbers, as I said, consistent with the coding from the Department of Education. But if we can help, please let us know.
And that's, that's where I wanted to go this year, is to sit down with you guys a little bit more and understand it. Again, we're all, our budgets are still the one-line items, so finance committee's gonna sit down with you and try and break down and understand your numbers, where they're coming from. But we're still on the one-line.
That's not...
Anything else, Doc?
No.
Anything else from anybody else? We don't have a lot of departments here anymore.
I'm wondering about a timeframe. Like, do we have something specific so that we're not in the same spot we were last year? Like, by this date, we need to have a rough draft and by this date, we want to meet with each individual, you know, if we had a timeframe like that, then it might...
We do.
Do I have that? Is that what I'm looking at?
Okay.
Page four.
Oh, we got it.
Okay.
So we've, we've got a number of things together, but we haven't set, we haven't set...
Fifty-four, it's on.
Ordinarily, we meet every Tuesday night with a different department. I don't think we've set that schedule just yet.
Okay.
And obviously, we understand that there are bigger budgets that take more time and more time consuming to put together. There are smaller, smaller budgets that, you know, expenses are four hundred bucks, it's been four hundred bucks for years and they don't have a problem with that. Those are pretty easy to sweep right through and try to take care of those in the beginning and give the larger departments a little extra time to get their budgets together.
So realistically, what is, is there, I've never done this before, so you have to bear with me, but is there a way that you, how soon could you set up a schedule to meet with, say, the people who have a four hundred dollar budget? You know, meet with them by this time and then, so we have it, you know, we have it ahead and we can...
Historically, we've started in January.
Okay.
And we go January pretty much through April, depending upon snow days and occasionally people have some personal issues that come up and then we have to change meetings. We try and, you know, four-month stretch to do everything.
It just seems like if people had a deadline, a firm deadline, you know, if they knew now, like my meeting with the finance committee is January twenty-fifth, then they would have their budget ready for January twenty-fifth and have enough time to work on it.
It's all out and we give them at least four weeks to put it together.
Okay.
And we're still doing it in May? And we're still doing it in May?
Yeah. My goal is to get it done much sooner this year. I did not like being up to the final bell like we were last year. I'd like to have it together, meet with you guys, we're done, formalize it, then we go back and whatever discussion that we had with you guys, if you have some adequate time to make some changes to it.
I guess being on the finance committee and having gone through this last year, I just want to add, it would be important to have the support of the board, the select board, to, to make sure that this process, once, if you agree to it or you want to make changes to it and you adopt it, that it really is implemented and followed up on so that, you know, people understand that this is, you know, they're just one cog in the wheel, but the wheel's not gonna turn unless, unless everybody's on board.
Well, I think that's, I think you bring up an interesting point that has to be on our next agenda. We're short of members here tonight to discuss the whole process, unfortunately, and then adopt the process or modify the process as a case may be and go from there. As I said, I've been here long enough to see the one extreme to the other. I remember getting elected in May and being thrown into my first budget meeting, doing budgets the next weekend or a week at a meeting, in detailed budgets, but the finance committee basically didn't do anything. It was our budget and building it from the ground up quickly.
I believe the process is the finance committee puts it together, we're the ones that bring it to the town meeting. If you guys don't agree with our budget, I believe you guys can put together another budget and present it as well. It's really under the charge of the finance committee to bring that forward. I think historically, previous boards may have acquiesced that to you guys, but we're trying to pull it back in and I know what we're charged of doing.
I had a conversation today which would indicate that that may not be the correct, that the correct thing is it's our budget and we decide who to appoint if we can allow you, allow you or direct you to build the budget. I had a conversation today with Tom Hoffman, that just came up indirectly as to who had what authority. And he said, according to him, when we build a budget, present the warrants to you, you review the warrants and decide whether he's gonna agree or oppose them. And I was a little confused at that point, but that was a different, than, than we've done in the last couple of years, but we can't, we can't acquiesce to the finance committee doing the budget. And again, way back when, we did the budget from ground, from zero on up, so we'll, we'll talk about this when we have a more complete board and decide what the process is gonna be. But I think this is a step in the right direction. Uniform, uniformity in submissions.
Trying to keep it uniform, so it's all the same.
Right. And now, and now the challenge is to get everybody to get it in on time. It shouldn't be a challenge, but it seems to be every year, get it challenged.
And, you know, even have a few hiccups along the way. Like I said, occasional personal things come up, we get a snow day. I remember one year we got hit with three snow days and it was just, we wiped out almost a month and that's kind of our slack that we need to, when we build them to fit down and get them together now.
You know, and I guess the question becomes if, if a budget is, if you're controlling the budget and someone wants to do something, a project or change of ways of spending money, do you decide that or is it, do they have the right to come to us is gonna be the next question, you know? Who sets the final budget, I guess is the question.
Budget just has to be balanced.
Right.
If it's, if it's a discussion, then I would think that, you know, the finance committee department head and board of select would sit down and say, this is important.
Right, that's the way I would anticipate it.
Project needs to get done, you know, can we make it happen? And then at that point, you know, we only have a finite source of revenue. So we gotta take a little from here, which means somebody might not get as much and this department gets a, gets a little bit more, but it's a balancing act and it always has been and it's, you know, if we had infinite funds, we would certainly fund everybody with all the products, projects.
Any other questions?
Yes. Sorry. So if the finance committee sends a sheet out and they collect the information, everyone sends it back, you populate it into the Excel sheet, you look at all of those things and present it to us before it's balanced or that way? Before it's balanced?
I would think we should have a number of meetings over time.
Right.
Yeah, it's as if we have a number as, as we go together.
And then we work on it together to cut and change. So at what, what point does the town administrator get involved? Or are they not involved? How does that work?
There's the pendulum. Diana was intimately involved and built the budget completely without any of us, finance or select board, probably, and I don't mean without anybody, but with very little initial input from us and then we juggled the books around.
If you were looking for input from the town administrator, what input would you be looking for so that everyone knows what their role is?
We talked about this at our last meeting and on, John talked about inviting whoever the, you know, the town administrator to each of the meetings. So it's on the scheduling sheet when we do things. He, he wants to be all inclusive with anyone who's interested in doing.
I, you know, I think we should be present for those. Somebody should either be present or have a representative present for those meetings so that we, we are aware of what's going on. And that would be my next question. When that information is coming back, is there a way to make sure that it comes back into our office as it's, as the raw data is coming into you? I think we'd like to get the raw data to have, to, to keep informed as the budget gets built.
Right, I don't want to, I mean, I'm really interested in how this whole thing works and seeing each line item and figure out, you know, where people can cut. So if it came to us as it came in rather than a whole lot of paper and numbers at once, you know, so I could keep up with it before and just be aware?
I think that would be, the ideal situation is as you get a sheet in from a department head, then that filters out to us, to everyone. Is that what you're anticipating?
Yes.
That's what I'm thinking too.
I'm, I have no problem giving you the information too.
Okay.
That's be fine. And then we can make suggestions along the way if we see something that red flags it for whatever reason, we can go from there and make suggestions.
So now that we have this, is the next, what's the next step? Send it out to people and ask for input?
Well, I think what they're, what we, the proper thing would be to discuss it amongst ourselves as a select board and adopt this as the procedure we're gonna follow this year.
Okay.
And give the, if it is the procedure we're gonna follow, give the support that they need to get it done on time, which sometimes doesn't help, but we'll give them all the support.
Well, that's, that's probably the problem is we need, you know, if we put a deadline in place, we need somebody to say, you gotta get it here because you as the, as the town managers, if people aren't, department heads aren't getting us the information, well, then it slows it down and then we get to the end of the... well, then it slows it down. And then we get to the end of the, we have other meetings already set up for other departments. We move that department to the end, and if it's a large department, takes us a couple of meetings, and then we're back, you know, almost to the end of the, the end of the process.
The problem with that, and, and that, that's the ideal situation. Problem with that is we only have so many paid department heads. After that, we have elected department heads, which very little we can do when it comes to that.
Keep in mind, we're also volunteering.
No, no, I'm not saying.
That we're trying to do the whole process.
I'm saying, we can only encourage at that point in time, because an elected official. I'm thinking when I did Planning Board budgets, I mean, that was one of the $400 budgets that went in every year, same thing every year. But we were an elected official, so it wasn't like you could do anything to the Planning Board to make them come in on a certain day with that, if they chose not to. I only, I'm not picking on Planning Board for any particular, other than I was the one that did.
No, I understand that. But at some point, you know, you have to say, you know, this is your scheduled meeting. If you can't make it, we will try and fit you in, but at some point...
Well, at some point in time.
We have to put a number in there because...
Right. That's the, that's my suggestion would be, if you don't have your budget in by X date, this is what we're doing to you.
Can I?
It's easy enough, I think, because those committees are smaller and you're not going to have a lot of money.
No.
It's the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Highway Department.
There's probably five or 10 then.
You know, fewer that are, are bigger that you can't quite do it yourself.
But maybe the small ones.
Conservation usually can put numbers in.
It might be, but those, those aren't the big dollar ones. We could, $400 is, is not going to kill us one way or the other. It's a matter of, you know, it's the million-dollar budgets that really, if we don't know what's going on with that, we can't allocate it.
So can I suggest that, I mean, we need to discuss it, but in order for us to come up with this, with a decision, it would be helpful to know what department heads thought of that? So can we send it out and put it on the agenda for next week to get feedback from them in order for us to discuss, and then we're not putting this off?
Can, can you do that? Can you get that out to department heads?
And just say, review and give us your feedback?
Yeah, we're supposed to be in that.
That was the plan.
Fourteen-day review, any changes?
The timeframe was to get it out to department heads next week, so that they can look at it.
And, you know, appreciate feedback.
Any feedback that department heads have, so that we can, you know, discuss with their needs in mind?
Right, does this go with the policy procedures, a fourteen-day review, any new draft or change with anything in town? Don't we have to have a fourteen-day review?
I'd have to get that by a month. What would do we, you say?
We talked about that, you remember the policy?
Yeah, oh, yeah, but I, but we, it never got passed.
But we talked about initiating, you know, getting them, because at least we'll have, fourteen days is, that's a deadline, rather than not, and just, it's just going on and on, and then...
Well, then that would skip next week's meeting and make it the...
But then would that delay the process?
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah.
When were you hoping to send the initial?
Well, next week, we're hoping to send out to the department heads. So, I mean, if you want their input, you can proceed with that anyways.
Right.
And then you can send out your own email to them, asking them...
I just think it would be unfair for us to make a decision based on what we think, rather than what the department heads.
Well, I guess my, I would suggest that we send it out, ask for comments.
Good.
And then move along in that direction.
Mm-hmm.
If somebody doesn't make a comment within fourteen days, then they've lost their opportunity to make a comment.
This is more about the form, correct? What's your message to the departments? Are you level funding? Are you decreasing, are you increasing? So is that going to be on the next meeting? Should I put it then?
Something that should be discussed with the whole Board, as opposed to three of us.
Yeah, that's big.
Well, it's been done in the past.
Buried.
Yeah, usually it's been, I mean, the last couple have been zero or level funded.
Level, yeah.
Depending on how you like to use the term of our...
Which one is most successful?
Level.
Well, this is all based on a zero-based budget.
That sheet is, based on zero, okay.
Well, because you're using it like, whatever, sending out an edict with the form saying, you know, this is a level-funded, we're planning, we're planning a level-funded budget, therefore make your...
We're, we're, it's a zero-based budget. You're building it from the ground up.
Well, that's where we got into the semantics of last year. Zero-based as opposed to, you're not spending, we're not granting the departments any increases in their, in their expenditure lines is the question. That's where we got into the semantics last year, between zero-based and level-funded.
If you can build your budget as if you have $0 and you're requesting money, you're putting, I have paper expense. I'm going to spend $400 on that. They're building it up from zero, all the way to justify their expenses.
But what's, what is our target, I guess, then, if you want to, we've got to...
Is there a way to enter a target into there for each department to send out?
No, it's, it's, they're built, I mean, if they want, you know, if anybody wants to go and pay the entire town, he's going to put $40 million in there to do it, he can put it in there. It's not going to get approved because we don't have that kind of money. But it's a way to, uh...
Well, let's say it's a...
Put their information in, so that, listen, I requested this last year, I, you know, and it's a way for them to come to us and, and fight for these projects, say, I think this is important, and we have to sit down with them and allocate, you know, the money that's there.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I have a lot to say.
No, you, that's fine.
So if this year, you put this sheet out there and you use a zero-based budget, where you start from the bottom and you build your way up, is it fair to say that if we adopt this way, then next year would be easier to transpose those numbers and work from there, instead of starting from zero all over again?
It should be a zero-based budget every year.
We did that last year.
We did it this way last year.
Okay.
It should be, just because, look at it this way, if, if a department, if, say, Highway Department gets half a million dollars to do a street project, and then the following year, they don't have that same street project, do we just give them a half a million dollars?
Gotcha. I love you.
Why, are you marketing something or what are you saying?
I got you.
Basically, yeah, I don't want you to say, well, yeah, I get $10,000 in expenses every year, so that's what I'm going to keep asking for. They want to know what is being spent on to justify that.
Thanks, that made it clear.
That's, that's our...
And that, and, and don't get me wrong, that's what I'm saying when we're saying, give them, that we, we're going to look at every expense anyway.
Right.
Correct.
But I think it's unfair to say to them, build your budget, and then we're going to pick it apart. You know, I, I, that may not be the right terminology, but whether we anticipate a 1% increase in a budget or zero, like we did last year, or whatever, I think, I frankly would let them juggle their priorities. Not that we aren't going to question their priorities, but let them build their priorities into this. And, and that's the way we've done it in the past, it's just...
Well, for instance, I know the Fire Department, um, when I worked with Billy Culey last year, he needed a lot of equipment upgraded, updated, uh, and he listed all that stuff out, you know? And he had a huge number at the bottom. And I said, you know, we need to prioritize this and figure out what we can do. Uh, and just to give you an example, he had, um, you know, he wanted eight self-contained breathing apparatus tanks in case his guys had to go into a burning building.
Mm-hmm.
And he said, that gives me two groups. I said, I agree with you, we need to get there, but right now, why don't we do four, and we can take that other four and put it in next year's budget and prioritize next year. So it's a balancing act. They're going to come in, they're going to ask for the world, and it's our job to sit down and say, okay, we need, we know where you want to be, and certainly, we don't want to protect health, safety, or, or any of those important items, but we also have to work in what money we have.
Right. And when is the decision usually made about increases or no increases? When is that decision usually made?
When you send out the forms.
When we send out the forms, we usually make a, um, a policy decision amongst ourselves as to what we were going to do.
Okay.
Well, how do you know it before you even know the revenue side?
We, we've taken a best guess estimate and said, I mean, and, and the budget's only a best guess estimate anyway.
It is. I mean, it's, we know that, you know, come April, May, we get some final revenue numbers.
Right.
Comes in, and, and it's, it's a, it's a working document.
And the free cash is always an offshoot of it. It's a flexible budget, and something doesn't get spent, and whatever. But, you know, and my memory is, in the past, we've sent this out with saying, who do we anticipate a 1% increase or a 2% increase or 0% increase? You know, you got to work with the same dollars you had last year. Um, and, you know, sometimes we kind of hand, hold our hands over the Ouija board and say, new growth is this amount, so we have a little extra money to play with, so you can spend a half a percent or 1% or something like that. Um, and when times were tough, it was zeros.
Right.
You lived in, you made a go with what, because, you know, we have, we have contractual increases, for instance, within the Police Department, um, of, I don't remember.
Two percent?
Two percent. Um, and that's fine. We, technically, we can raise taxes by 2% a year. Anytime we have an increase over 2.5%, the simple math is, we have to take it from someplace else to cover that, whatever the additional percentage is.
Well, if the school budget goes up by 5% or 6%, 10%, then we're...
Then we got to take it from everybody else, and that's where this happens. So it, it gets, it, it's truly a living document as it goes along.
That's why I'm saying, if you build it zero-based up, they're going to put in what they want, whether or not they, and then you can make a policy decision that, you know, these, you know, whoever's going to get 2% increase, 3%, 0%.
I mean, it's a, it's a philosophical difference. I, I would frankly prefer to give them a target to stay within, rather than have somebody come in. And I understand Billy, and we made the exception last night, or last time with Bill. He needed a lot of stuff because the department was refreshing, and actually, we went to paramedic status. So there were a lot of things, so their budget probably went up by more than whatever the target was we gave them. And that's the point, is we, you know, we will juggle the priorities as we go along.
Okay.
And we have to decide. So let's get a clear scope. You're going to send that out to department heads with, are you going to ask for them to review it and make any comments back to us, or do you want us to send something separate out?
Um, however you want to do it. You want us to send it out?
Yeah. Why don't you send it out, and you can close a short thing there. You're looking for feedback, and the Select Board is looking for feedback, if that's okay with the rest of the board.
And then can someone report back to us next week with the feedback, because they'll send it to you?
I thought you said 14 days. How many hours?
Well, we talked about that. I think we're sticking to your schedule. We're, we're, we're putting the 14 days aside and sticking to your schedule. When did you have, ask them to give you your feedback by?
I thought that's what this meeting was. Look, you're going to explain how it worked.
More so than asking them for feedback, it was asking them to start inputting, you know?
Well, we only have one, two, we have three department heads here. So we, we don't have much of a...
So at least then, if you give, if you send that out and you give people a chance to review the documents, since they're not here, and then by next week...
Report back.
Report to us, and then we can go from there. And if they didn't reply, then they're out.
Are you guys here next week anyway for your meeting, or?
I think so, aren't we? I'm not sure if we're meeting next week.
When would be the next time your, your committee is meeting?
Uh, two weeks from tonight.
Yeah.
So why don't we put you on the agenda for two weeks from tonight to finalize the discussion?
The 26th?
Is that Thanksgiving?
It's the, yeah, it's right before Thanksgiving.
Right before Thanksgiving. Anybody got a problem with that?
6:30, is that okay?
And that, that keeps us on the same track, same timeframe that you already have?
Why don't we go for seven, so that we have some time to, since John's not here tonight?
Yeah, John's not here, that way we can meet upstairs before they come up, so we'll do seven.
Seven.
And that keeps us on the same timeframe that you already have set, yes?
Well, they're slipping already, because they were anticipating, tonight was going to be the...
That was supposed to be the question and answer. We were, we were presenting this, this is how you want to do the budget. This is how, this is how you input it.
I wouldn't think there's going to be a lot of criticism, because it's basically just a change in forms, but let's see.
Oh, I just, I think the forms are pretty similar to the way we did it last year. I'm, I'm just confused, I, I, well, I'm worried about how you're going to word it so that the, the department heads don't get it and aren't confused, like, well, are you really asking us to do this? Or are you just asking us to look it over and let us know, let you know what we think about it? I mean, I, I think it needs to be more clear if...
This is the form we're adopting, but if you have any serious questions about it, please get back to us.
Right, and, okay. I mean, I think that if someone needs to have...
This is the form that we're using.
Does anybody on the Select Board have a problem with the forms as they saw them tonight for building the budget?
No.
Someone might make a...
Well, wait a minute. So that being said, why can't we just say these are the forms we're using? Because there's two of them, is it?
Well, maybe, I hate to sound like the federal website for...
This is going to make our job easier, because like I said, it's going to eliminate error. We're somebody, we're, we're a volunteer board, so we only meet Tuesday nights, too, and we're supposed to sit down and review with boards. If we're keying all this information, it's a lot of time.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking, if someone goes to put it, and I'm not saying there's any problem with the form or anything, but if someone goes to input something and it doesn't work the way we anticipated, I think we want to hear back on something like that.
Drop us an email, get all the...
But that will probably be in your little, whatever you send. If you have any issues dealing with, you know, filling this out or entering, then please let us know, and we'll get someone to help you, or we'll, we'll see if it's a problem with, with the form or whatever.
I think my suggestion is we still meet on the 26th to discuss this. Get the form out, see what comes back, if anybody hollers over it, and then...
Vicki graciously said that she would be here to help turn normal business hours with department heads if they're having some issues putting it in. And if they're, and if Vicki's having issues after they've, if the department, if Vicki's still having issues after meeting with the department head, she can give me a call. Tell me what the issues are, and we can, we can probably resolve quicker that way.
Well, I don't, I'm not disputing that. I mean, I would like to see all the problems cleared up by the time we get here in two weeks, but I think you got to give them a chance to at least comment on this and at least look it over. Granted, they should have been here tonight, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I think the fact that we have three department heads here, and one of which isn't even going to follow the, the format, being the School Department, um, you've got a lot of, a lot of people here. I think you, you ask them for comments, but that's, how's the rest of the board feeling?
I, I, I agree.
So the only reason I'm wavering is because if this is the form we're going to use, what's the reason that we can't just vote to say?
Because maybe someone says, this doesn't work for me, or, I can't think of any reason frankly, but I, I don't know.
I mean, any discussion we're going to have is really...
Well, I think...
There's a lot of time to lay into this, and it's either this, or we go back to paper. And I'm trying to move us more using technology, so that the information is here and we move forward instead of moving backwards.
And I, and I'm, I'm agreeing that it goes out, and they, they're told to use it and submit it, but if they have a comment, then this is your chance to comment, is on the 26th, if you don't...
The budget was put together wholeheartedly last year using these sheets.
Yeah. But I'm just, no, no, I'm just saying, if they don't come in on the 26th, it's the drop dead date. You're, you're out of luck.
There still may be issues when they're trying to input things, like I said. They may have more expenses that they need, which means that, you know, you've got to go in and customize that tab, that department, because they need more, more lines.
Well, and if this goes out and they're told to use it, and then if they, if they use it and they have it, they, they still should use it, but if they have a problem, the 26th is the day they have to come in and talk to us about it. Plus, we need to discuss our own, how we're going to do this, our, the procedures, the policies, the philosophy that we're going to follow while we build the budget.
Right.
And that's the 26th, and we'll meet with the Finance Committee that night at 7:05, and hopefully resolve all those issues at one time, and by then, this is now the, this pro, this, the sheets are, are given and everybody's using them. But the 26th, and see how it's going on that night.
Could I suggest that we talk about the policy, the procedure that we'd like to see used next week, instead of waiting, so that way on the 26th, they're not starting all over, at least?
Amongst ourselves.
Yeah, so Select Board discussion of...
Yes. Select Board discussion of Finance, of Bud, Budget Process.
Next week, and that way on the 26th, you've already sent it out. Any changes that people think they need made are on the 26th, and then we're going forward.
With the Finance on the 26th, we know what we want to do.
Yes.
And, and keep in mind, the process is a living document. The spreadsheets are a living document.
I just don't want you guys to be held up. I want you to be able to go forward.
The department needs to have something changed on it, or the account number added in, let us know.
Right, in that timeframe, yes.
And we'll resend it back out.
That makes, that's good.
It's not a static thing that this is all you have to work with. The School Department's a great example.
Right.
They've got a huge budget that doesn't fit into this, but we, but because our budget only has one line, we can put the one line in and still have it flow and still work with these sheets.
I just don't want you to be held up by it. So if we have the discussion next week and we meet back on the 26th, then you guys are good to go.
And I don't want to start the process by slowing it down now. It'll get slow enough towards April, April, May. It'll get slow on its own.
Well, I would like to at least have a drop dead date of this budget being, um, two weeks before that final meet, no, our final meeting review, because I don't want to be here till 10 o'clock trying to make it all work, because under pressure, it doesn't, I didn't think that at all.
Last year, it was crazy.
I think it's the 20th. I have a calendar. I think it's the 20th of May.
And you, you normally want it signed two weeks before that.
Well, we have to sign the warrant two weeks before that.
Right.
Which is...
So this...
So that would be the 6th.
Huh?
That would, if the warrant would have to be signed the 6th of May, so you would want to meet with the Finance Committee in April.
want to meet with the finance committee in April.
Right. And then we, the last weekend, the last week-
That's the drop dead date. We make all the final changes. I have a week to sit down with the finance committee, put all the changes in, make sure all the numbers balance, and then we give it to you.
Town election is when?
May fifth, yep.
Cause then on top of that, you're gonna have two new select board people to educate to the budget at that time, too.
Wouldn't it be great if we could make this work so that it was all done before the election? That would be good.
Well, the budget may be done. The problem is with the new people coming in, and I've always thought that was a weird process. You get elected and you get to support a budget, you had no process, no, no building of, or comment on.
How do other towns do it?
I don't, it's always been the silliest thing I've ever thought of, why we have the election and then we, so some poor guy comes in and all of a sudden he's stuck with a budget that he had nothing to do with.
Don't other towns carry through and then they have the election afterwards?
I guess you guys-
It varies. It varies, yeah. Some actually have their election at their town meeting.
And you would think, and why don't we have it at the same time as the state election? Save the money on a separate election. You know, we run a separate town election as opposed to running, we could've had an election last week with the state election, since everybody was here already.
How do we change that? That was a special. That was different, but...
But there are usually state, the state elections are usually in November. I mean, but anyway, just one of those quirks, I always thought it was funny. That first year I got elected, all of a sudden I was looking at a twelve million dollar budget, which I hadn't probably done.
And they haven't done that. So at this very moment, what else can we do to help you get moving with this?
That's it. We're just here to show people how to put things together. It's a very simple, four-page, first page is a summary. If you hit print, it prints out on the four pages.
Are you leaving feeling accomplished at this point, or not so much?
It is what it is. I mean, if we had more department heads here, hopefully we would've had a better discussion. Oh, I need this, oh, I need that. We don't have, I know, for instance, Donna was one of the few departments last year. I actually gave her the spreadsheets and she pulled them out. Not an issue, right? Pretty much expenses, wages, revenue. Other departments, you know, I know we have a technology curve where nobody is, you know, goes all the way from don't use a computer to use it every day, so, you know, you're gonna have some of those issues, but I think if we put this in place and we work through the bumps this year, that it gets easier as we go on.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Make sure you find out what happened to our projector?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a green room. Conservation commission.
We're negotiating.
Greenway negotiating.
The way you should, thank you.
Yeah, Charlie's here.
Charlie in April.
I'll come upstairs twice.
One is the negotiating team, and the other is the Greenway committee.
Oh, committed, oh. Charlie, you got it?
Your role here is to review an aspect of negotiations with Pioneer Valley Railroad, which one aspect is to get title search on this property. And this property has been around since the mid nineteenth century. I have my slides, I sort of, do you want a hot copy of these things?
I guess so.
That might be easier. There's real good information right there.
Charlie, I guess I gotta ask you, we're talking about a title search, does that mean you're getting close to purchase?
Uh, we have, yes.
We need to discuss in executive?
That is, the momentum is built.
Is building?
It's built.
Okay.
We have to get it completed by fiscal year fourteen, so we have up to July first to accept this grant or not lose this grant. So we're in the process, and this title search business is not very, very quick.
Not something like this.
And so we wanna get this off the ground, go through the decision, and it is expensive. You can anticipate it's going to be expensive and at least in front of you right now, you have three proposals. You know, it describes, the first page just describes the involvement, how much is involved there. And it is complicated. We have to do research on five to six hundred documents. We have, this is piece information, we have maps from back to nineteen hundreds. There's identities of people in ownerships beginning in eighteen fifty-three. So we have them in a map, if you're looking at them, but someone has to look at them and identify what's happened to these various parcels. And the parcels are a lot simple in the sense they're all fee simple, a railroad man owns the whole corridor, they have rights away.
Oh, they're rights away.
Yeah. So it gets a little more complicated. Railroad ownership is complex, fee simple, free, fee, interest, and easement interest. Our appraisal, however, is fee simple, as is most of the appraisals for East Hampton and Westfield.
What happens if the railroad only has an easement over a property?
Well, I'm not capable of answering that, but this has happened in the past. Both, a very complex ownership of the corridor existed in East Hampton as well, well as Westfield.
Oh, wow.
So they know how to do this, and once you have a purchase and sale signed, that's when they start the abandonment process, which involves the federal government and so on. But there are three proposals in here. This was accelerated recently by our contact with the Division of Conservation Services. As you know, in July, we sent a letter to Secretary of Transportation Davies outlining a process to enhance the value to the railroad by exchanging rails, the loans that exist on the property. The property now has seventy pound rails. I'm not sure what the base of that is, seventy pound rails, and the railroad suggested that they wanted more than the appraised value, and so they suggested we go to Mastio Chief and see if they could exchange those rails with high-quality rails compared to the ones that are existing there. And Mastio Chief thought that was reasonable, and I understand they have approached the federal government to facilitate that, because the Mass State Department of Transportation just kinda do that, because some of the rails apparently have federal ownership on them.
Right.
In any case, our objective is to look over these three proposals, get a sense of what the cost is, and if this is sufficient information to move on and make a decision, because we have the money to do this from a warrant, the article two of our warrant last November twentieth, and, but it has to be spent with the corporate and select board. The first one is Robert Spencer. This guy was recommended by the Division of Conservation Services. He just finished working on the Westfield Rail Trail project. He's completed five title searches for the EEA agency, and that stands for Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. That's where we got the land grant, and he's familiar with their specifications, and he's very flexible, attentive, timing, and he has made of a proposal of seventeen thousand five hundred. The second is, and I have been sort of canvassing one aspect of this, when you talk to a title search company, it's very important to get some sense of whether they're familiar with what we're trying to get accomplished there, because this isn't a normal title search. They have to have experience here. And many of the subsequent proposals, the next two that I'm gonna talk about, they have the caveats in there because they really don't know what they're getting involved in. And one is in Boston. We are experienced in title examinations in general from municipal acquisitions for conservation and recreation, for project planning, for valuation and for court cases, including land court litigation, but they don't mention anything about railroad data. And they say it would be good, and we knew from discussions with the railroad, that in nineteen eighty-two, the railroad purchased some sections of this corridor, not necessarily the sections in Southampton, but they purchased those and had a title search done, and they indicated the law firm that they got that from, and the lawyer. And I have been trying to contact that law firm. It's an international law firm, and I haven't been successful in returning my calls, but I'm not sure what the process would be, that they would give us that information, or they would sell this information to us, or they would have to have authorization from the railroad to get this information. But this proposal, it would be helpful to obtain the nineteen eighty-two title search done for the railroad, that gives them up to nineteen eighty-two, hence their overall proposal is of the lower than five, seven, five hundred. And finally, I went to Hope Grant Page and took a time, responded. And again, she's very, very cautious about giving a basic figure, because, and she has to find it out to a company called Mosh, Moriarty, Ontell, and Golda, who apparently have had some experience in doing this, but they come up with a number of five thousand to eleven thousand, and with a caveat that this is his best estimate and reserves the right to extend the time and increase the fees. He would do so, however, only after providing us with reasonable notice. So basically, we at this stage have the proposal. You could request us to get more. These proposals are not easy to define for both the lawyers or for us in the sense that are really comparing apples with apples with apples. And the one that I guess I have a greater affinity for is Robert Spencer. It's the most expensive, but he knows what he's doing.
Sometimes you get what you pay for.
That's right. And so, in addition to that, some of the complications of what these, the complications associated with the negotiations are on the last two pages. They're just for your information. They tell us, this is instructions for us to get the title search done as soon as possible. And they describe what the Bennett Franklin appraisal was based on, and it's a fine appraisal, but that's, this is the way they have to deal with it, given the complications of the ownership. The appraisal did not make any upward adjustment for what is known as the corridor factor, whatever that is. Bennett Franklin assumed a marketable title to fee simple interest. A quick look at the railroad valuation map, schedule of title, and that's what we have here, suggests that the Pioneer Valley Railroad is not able to convey a marketable fee simple interest to Southampton. The title examination appeared for EEA, and Westfield confirms flaws in that one, and the lawyer that, Spencer, Robert Spencer, that one cost fourteen thousand. So the negotiating team should get a solid understanding, and say, what are you negotiating over? I, you know, to the extent I know what I'm doing here, on a, you know, I think we'll get a title search and get all the parties, the Mastio Chiefs, uh, they've got these representative co-prints, and he has access to some funds that he might be able to access to help us get this finished. I think there is, again, certain amount of momentum. If we get them all on the same page at the same time in the same room, perhaps this'll work. But meanwhile, we have about two feet, or at least I have, two feet of files on there.
Yeah.
So this is not a simple process.
No.
So our goal, again, was to review this, to see if the information is accurate for this kind of an expense, and if it's, if it's suggested enough to you that we would like to pick one of these.
How much money was approved at the November meeting last year?
We have thirty-nine thousand five hundred. And that's not only for closing costs, title search, environmental assessment, and engineering and so on.
And if you were to go with the more expensive proposal, do you still have enough money, you think, to cover the rest of your price?
I think so.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I just can't, I can't imagine how much the environmental is gonna cost.
No, that's five, six thousand if they're necessary. If we, fortunately, if we have to go to phase two, PBPC is the other one, another contract rate, contact with them, they, they have money from the EPA, but they will swing for that second part of the, if there's a need for it, there's, and we're not anticipating that the territory is compromised, but you may be involved otherwise.
Now, when we're talking about the purchase, is it just from week ten, or are we purchasing all the way back for where we can?
We're going from Bowman Road down to Value Road.
Value Road.
Four point two five miles.
Under twenty-five thousand, I need, we just need these for buy and purchase?
Say that again?
Under twenty-five, the contract professional service, under twenty-five, we just need three telephone bids.
Three quotes, yep.
So that's what we got.
And I have a whole bunch of other lawyers that have responded, but they all want a lot more data than I have to give them, you know, and so on. I have more if you want, to get more bids and referrals and...
Well, I think this probably represents the range of bids that would come in no matter how many people.
Yeah.
And this guy's with the Westfield.
Yes.
And comes recommended from?
Division of Conservation Services.
That's the pleasure of the board.
I make a motion?
You're certainly not.
I make a motion to allow the Greenway negotiating committee to go ahead with proposal number one and move forward with their project.
Hire Mr. Robert Spencer?
And hire Mr. Robert Spencer to do the title search.
Yes.
Motion's on the floor. Any second?
Second.
Any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Great job.
Now, you're gonna change your hats, Charlie, and you're gonna be-
Oh, I got my buddy here. Okay. Matt, you're on the floor.
So we're working with Charlie and the Greenway committee. They asked me to think beyond the next step of where we're gonna go with the project and to try to, after we acquire the land, since we're kind of on our way there, to think about funding a project, whatever the project may look like. And I think the best course of action is to, again, use the DOT and to get funding from them, and that's pretty much how all the rail trails in the area have been funded, I think, except Westfield's kicked in some of their own money for the Columbia Greenway. But basically, what we, I believe it was forwarded to you guys, was that, it's called Project Need Form.
We didn't get the form.
You didn't?
No.
It's in draft format. I have a couple copies. Basically, it outlines the project, and it gets us, it gets us in line for funding. It doesn't guarantee funding, but all it's saying to the DOT is, we think we have a viable project, and we'd like to get construction funding when we finish with designing. So this form goes up to a local gentleman? Yeah. They take it to Boston, they all discuss it, and they stay sure this looks like a good project. We'll give you money in two thousand nineteen or two thousand, whatever. It's your job to acquire the land, it's your job to design whatever the project is. So we came to the board just to get your approval to move forward with the project.
We put in a queue with the other projects that are existing in this town already, right?
Yeah, we should differentiate that we're, it'll be coming out of a different pot of federal money than the road projects are.
So all this does is request money from, that's it? Just a request for money?
It gets us a list of this call of other projects in the Pioneer Valley region, and it's, you know, the state is highly supportive of it, and they wanna see a line from Vermont to Connecticut, and this, this is the, one of the missing links between us and Westfield.
I mean, if one in East Hampton is still heavily used, then rarely a time I will be in East Hampton that I don't have to stop for somebody's crossing.
And Matt also can give some lumber as to if we actually transform, if we're successful in purchasing this corridor, and we go through the various processes of cleaning it up in terms of getting rid of the rails and getting rid of the ties and stabilizing it and fencing and signing it, at that point, we would be- and signing it, at that point, we would be probably approaching a town for a design, which would be expensive, but the implementation of that design, I think you have many of which is over a million dollars a mile.
As what? Well, the construction, the construction costs are, they range around the state from one to one and a half million dollars a mile of trail.
So.
I would put this one in the higher end, because you've got the two bridge structures that we're on.
Oh, yeah.
Now, East Hampton, you had your vote down then, then?
I want to say, well, I don't know the, there was a lot of cleanup costs that were done beforehand, I don't know what the, the cost of that was.
They had a second, they had an environmental.
You said, get the, you old Stevens, no, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But exclusive of that?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I want to say it was in the?
Their acreage is about twice as big as ours.
There it is.
Forty-five point one acres versus twenty-three point five.
And when we say we've got the two bridges here, they had to erect some structures, didn't they?
They had to.
And one of that one was ten, ten is?
That was, yeah, in Northampton.
Yeah, Northampton.
That was done with, I believe, our money.
That's nice.
That section from the downtown Northampton south into East Hampton was our.
That's great.
Which, but, you know.
Did they have any bridges?
There was one of the structure off of, I forget if it was at O'Neill Street.
Not that far.
Yeah, O'Neill Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They had another structure there that they had to build. But those were, those are different, because there wasn't structures there to begin with, so they could build brand new. I think what we're going to have to do is rehab those there.
Cheaper or more expensive is.
Right. And now, Charlie mentioned the engineering studies, part of that money, that thirty-nine thousand go into that, the more in-depth evaluation.
I guess what you're asking us is to support your application to the side line?
Basically.
I just have one more question.
Go ahead.
Before I make a motion. So, once you, I'm just going to be very optimistic, once we're approved and we're ready to build the whole rail trail, where is all that money going to come from?
The money to build it?
Yeah.
My feeling is the category of money called CMAC funds, it stands for congestion, mitigation, air quality. Basically, they use those funds for rail trail projects, they being federal highway gives out money in this category for rail trail projects, intersection improvement projects, any projects that can prove that you're going to improve air quality. So this trail being a network from, basically, you could physically commute from Southampton to Belcher Town once the trail is done, and people do commute quite a bit on this particular trail. They would put money forth from that category.
Is that what other towns have used that money?
Right.
Okay. Okay. So I make a motion to approve the go-ahead with the application to the Department of Transportation?
You want to support it, isn't it?
To support the application to the Department of Transportation?
Yeah, basically.
Nope.
If I could interrupt?
Yeah.
Usually, they like to see these applications come in from the highest board, so hence, your name is on the front cover there.
So would you like a motion to have this submitted, or would you like a motion for us to support it, or would you like a motion, I don't see a sign, signature line?
Right, it's just a draft, I didn't want to.
So why don't we accept the motion to support the final draft? The final draft of the motion to be signed till later day?
Sure, we'll get that to Reggie to have you guys endorse.
So I make a motion to support the final draft to be submitted to the Department of Transportation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. It's been a long time coming.
Can we get that to Reggie so we can sign it next Tuesday and have it on the agenda? Is that possible?
Yeah, it's basically done, I just take the draft off of that, and you guys can send it over, I'll write a cover letter for you to send over.
And may I mention that the Greenway is having a fundraiser on Monday night at Opa Opa, so if anybody would like to come down, especially between seven and eight, be happy to get you something to drink.
There we go.
One very important sliver, yeah. Just saying.
Thank you, all. Thank you, Charlie. Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie. Great job.
Open time for the public, going once, going twice, seeing none. You do have minutes that we can approve if you wish to, we have tables from ten to nine, and our meetings are ten twenty-two, eight twenty-nine, eight thirteen, eight six, and seven thirty. Of course, you all read them at home on your week pass. Do we need to table those again?
I did not read anything.
We need to table those again is the answer.
So, okay. Sorry.
So we'll carry those off to the right.
Okay. I promise I'll read them. I'm sorry.
We need to discuss this special time meeting now, or?
No.
We can do it in more people here.
Yeah.
Upcoming meetings, November twenty-nineteenth, we're going to discuss our philosophy about budget process.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And our support for their forms?
You stop one.
Anything else that we've talked about?
Your fiscal message, are you doing level funded?
Well, that's, that's lumping it all together.
Yeah, that's it.
Whether we're going to do that or do the zero-based budget, depending on how you see it, whether it's the chicken or the egg. Any notes that we have on there already?
Speaking of chickens.
You do have quite an agenda on the nineteenth. You have the tax classification hearing at six-thirty, Kathy Lynch from ECAT at six-forty, joint meeting with the personnel board to interview a personnel board member, and then seven, well, never mind, that was it.
Wait, what was that about the personnel?
A joint meeting with the personnel board to interview potential new members.
There's an elected member who never took his seat.
Right. Can we talk about, says vote Liz Moulton to be backup liaison, but I thought we weren't, I was not backup liaison, I was going to be the liaison.
The liaison.
Yeah, the mic was stepping down, but do we need to vote on that?
I think we should, but I'm not sure how well we can vote on it with only three members here. Or is there a meeting?
Um, yeah, but I'm not going, it's my anniversary, so we have till December.
Okay. Because I can't get there at six o'clock.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Just going to put that on the vote, make sure.
Put it on the nineteenth?
Next, yeah, the nineteenth.
Next week, just.
Eliminate the?
Just vote for Liz.
Backup.
Okay.
Is there anything else on there, that meeting?
No.
I think that isn't enough, but.
Well, actually, I take that back, yes. We received one additional member who would like to be on the Highway Screening Committee. At the meeting of Wednesday, when you guys recapped, you thought there was five members, but you actually have six, but another person just submitted a letter, so if you accept that person, that would be seven, seven members to be screened.
So I think that's another question for that nineteenth meeting.
Okay.
The other thing is Doug Lancher called me today, and he submitted from?
That's on the nineteenth.
Nineteenth also. Doug Lancher is asked to be on the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
The only concern about the Highway Department is there is, the first meeting is Friday, does that make a difference?
It does, if we're going to put this guy on, it does, and if we're not going to.
Okay, so the first meeting will be Friday at five o'clock.
How many, who's on it, I think, there?
Liz, Ed, can I say all their names?
Yeah.
Nilda Cohen, Joe Slattery, Ed Colley, Jim Flermo, and?
Well, you forgot Art Lawrence.
Oh, Art Lawrence, that's seven.
Wait a minute, so there's seven already? Did I count on?
Liz, did I count, I did twice.
This is a.
Liz, Ed, Jim Flermo, Nilda Cohen, Joe Slattery.
Art Lawrence.
Art Lawrence.
And then the new person.
Oh, I must have counted that twice.
Okay. Well.
May I indirectly just inform the person that there is a meeting?
No. Yeah, it's an open meeting, so they're welcome to attend, and?
Yeah, well, I mean, what's the board's pleasure on, I mean, we can do it, we've got enough people here, but I mean, do you want to make it a seven-member committee, or you want to keep it at six?
Well, you voted it at five.
Voted at five. Some of us can't count on our fingers.
I thought it wasn't going to vote, or something?
I haven't had, I haven't talked, I was hoping he was going to be here to talk about it.
You said he would step off if?
Right. So if we leave it the way it is at six and he steps off to vote, then that's it, I think. You know, five is, if you're trying to get seven people all together, you're going to be getting into all sorts of trouble, so.
But the thought was keeping it nearby because of his experience in that, and hoping guiding you.
Right, so he'll be there for all the interviews, he'll be, he's on the committee until?
Is he going to be on the committee, or is he going to be?
Can he just step off when it's time to vote?
Well, if it's a committee of five, we vote it, and if it's six, we have to step away.
Can he be a consultant? Can you refer, like, questions to him?
Yeah, I mean, you can do that.
Well, can he be present during interviews?
Yeah. It's a seven-member committee.
Yeah, I know, I agree with you.
I would, I think that Ed's input's really important, so whatever we need to do to make sure that he's a part of that is what we need to do.
I guess then if you, the easiest thing would be to make, take a motion to adjust the number of members on the committee to seven, and then add it, is this on the agenda tonight, though?
No, that's why it's on the nineteenth.
Can't do it anyway. So he can't get on until next time, I think?
So can you just let the person know that there's a meeting on Friday to open to the public, and we're happy to have them?
Yeah, let's do that.
So if you have seven, then I can vote.
Right.
Yeah, we keep it as an item number.
Yeah.
All right, and anything else on that night?
The one thing you, on the, no, I'm sorry, no, that's it.
And then the twenty-sixth is going to be meeting with finance. Anything else on that night?
No.
And we'll keep that, try and keep that night short, or not short, but that issue, because there may be a lot of discussion if you get five or less, and however many select finance committee members are there.
Okay.
All right, so we'll try not to put anything else on that night. Anything else?
So, you know, David was supposed to draft the survey for the employees, and he's not here, so we need to come back to that. But on that note, I just need some clarification. When we had the communication meeting, and we were talking about the mailboxes, and we talked about when the bills could go in the mailboxes and when they couldn't, and then we specifically said that any turnovers needed to be brought up to the accountant's office. Am I right about that?
The money turnovers?
Any money turnovers needed to be brought directly to the accountant's office. I did say that, right?
I think so.
We said, because the auditors had suggested, suggested, and the board agreed, that we were missing a part of the loop. There was a check and balance that was missing.
You had said that.
And I said, I think that all turnovers need to be brought to the accountant's office, regardless, irregardless of when it is, you bring the money, you bring it upstairs.
Is that where the cash goes, or is it?
It goes to the treasurer's office.
Cash goes to her.
Yes, but then the auditors had said?
Yeah, this.
There needs to be a turnover upstairs in the accountant's office.
Right.
And we decided that, yes. Okay, so I just want, I'm hoping that the board can send a message out to all department heads reiterating that fact, because I don't think that it's happening, and I only know that because I go upstairs.
Do we have a problem? Do we know we have a problem?
Not all turnovers are being brought directly to the accountant's office, and so I'm hoping that the board would support a reminder that all turnovers need to be brought to the accountant's office.
If we said that we were going to do that, then we should do it.
Can we send a reminder out, please, that, to all department heads and to everyone that brings a turnover, and that if you bring the turnover to the treasurer's office, it needs to go upstairs to the accountant's office?
What we wanted to clear is that a turnover of cash, the cash money goes to Donna's office, and what are you saying is going to go?
You should have three copies when you go to the accountant's office.
Three receipts.
One, one for you, one for the treasurer, and one upstairs to Vicki.
So the cash in one receipt goes to Donna?
One.
Is Donna going to sign that receipt, so that then it goes to the?
It is signed.
And then the money comes in to my office. I sign, or, you know, whoever takes the money signs it, makes two copies, one for the department who brought the turnover in, and one for the accountant's office. So they have the copy in their hand when they leave my office.
So one of the copies.
So it should go directly upstairs that day at the same time.
There's a whole file folder set up with each department's name, all you have to do is stick it in and walk out.
So that when I go and enter receipts, before they can be posted, I take all those. Vicki has to take all those.
Well, I'm just saying, we can start just enumerating one step in the process. The memo that goes out says, you bring the cash to Donna, get a receipt from Donna, take one copy of the receipt to Vicki, and one copies for your department.
Yes.
That's, that's the process that's going to be followed.
Yes.
And you are, and it should be clear that you are to bring the receipt from Donna to Vicki, so there's no question that?
That it came from the person who actually put that on you, and then I can check it. I have, I mean, I have a stack of papers this big, but.
You want to say something like this, the receipt is to be personally delivered to Donna, out to Vicki's office, something not to indicate that mail, in her office mail or something else is to be?
No, if you specifically say cash turnovers or turnover receipts, and that's.
That should make it pretty clear.
Pretty self-explanatory.
Well, we want to make it, break it down to its basic elements. All right, done? Liz?
I guess so.
No, I'll make sure we get it.
I think I got it all, too.
Um, anything else?
One last item that you have to ratify is from the Wednesday meeting, the project funding agreement, with that email from Mr. Kosmouski, in regards to the bid savings, you had voted on it at the meeting of Wednesday. Do you recall that?
No, not at all.
I called Mr. Thomas, and I asked him for clarification, what it was, what it meant, and the town had voted to borrow one point seven nine nine two four four, and the lowest bid came in at nine twenty-two, does that ring about?
Yeah, to keep the money within the project.
Yep. And Mr. Thomas had stated that anything after the nine twenty-two is not reimbursable, and you had voted to, I think it was a minutes?
I thought we did the vote.
Mm-hmm. We're just ratifying it, because it was not on the agenda that night.
Oh. This was that explanation that Ed gave you about the school rule, that we borrowed?
One point two million.
One point two million, the bid came in at nine something.
Nine twenty-two.
Four hundred thousand, and we want to keep, it's not subject, the one, only the nine hundred is subject to the fifty-five percent reimbursement, but we can keep the money within the project, and we'll end up back on free cash at some point in time, if I remember correctly.
That's the way Ed explained it, yes.
That's the way I had it explained. And it wasn't on the agenda, but we have to, we have to vote that so that they can leave the money in the project, and we'll get it to free cash at some point in time.
Clarification. And I think you had brought up at that meeting, instead of leaving it, reborrowing it, why not pay down the?
Right, instead of, instead of using it for free cash?
Right.
You want to get the free cash number, put that on the borrowing, and pay it down right away?
Right.
Instead of using it for other projects.
Right.
Okay. So because it wasn't on the agenda last time, we need to re-vote it. Somebody want to make that motion to re, to re-vote, or ratify the vote that was taken at the last meeting?
I make a motion to ratify the vote taken on the project funding agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just, can someone maybe write up, send me an email or send Donna an email about what happened and how it worked, and what you guys just talked about, because I think we need to be in that loop a little bit?
Yeah. I think Ed is the one that best explained it to you.
Okay.
I understand what he's explaining to me, but.
I guess I didn't know the conversation that happened and whatnot, and since we're?
It comes down to the borrowing was for one point two, we only needed, I think it's like eight hundred thousand or nine hundred thousand for the project. it's like eight hundred thousand or nine hundred thousand for the project.
Right. But we spent more than that already because of change orders and stuff.
We're getting up there now, so it's not as much as it was. I mean, we've got another change order for sixteen thousand coming.
But these change, you're saying these change orders aren't covered under the reimbursement?
Yeah, they still are covered under the reimbursement, they're still within the nine twenty-two bid and the contingency, I think, that was there.
Right. Anything after that?
Right, there's enough money with the contingency. It's all, there's still savings there, some of, I think it's four hundred thousand. We only get the nine hundred, fifty-five percent of the nine hundred.
Right.
But there's four hundred thousand that we, extra that we borrowed, that if we keep it in the project, then it will eventually cycle through and become free cash at some point in time.
That we're approved for.
That we're approved.
The town approved one point seven, you borrowed one point nine. Because the town approved one point seven, what they're saying is, it's a letter of compliance from town council stating that the town voted to allow us to borrow one point seven if we want to keep it, if we keep it. It's not part of the fifty-five percent reimbursement, is what they're trying to say.
You're only going to get fifty-five percent of what have you spent, you're not getting fifty hundred percent of what you borrowed. I think that doesn't make any sense to me, anyway, so...
Right, no, so we're only, that's, that's an easier way to explain it, we're getting fifty-five percent of what we spent.
Correct.
Not fifty-five percent of what we borrowed.
No.
The excess, we can keep in the project, and eventually it will come back out as free cash, because it won't get spent.
But we still have to pay that down.
We have to pay it down, we borrowed it. So my suggestion was, as soon as it gets freed up, depending on what projects we have going, because the interest was so low on those, whether we keep it, use it, or just pay down the loans, the bonds.
Right, I guess I would have to do some research as to if I can transfer it to another project or not, that would be my, my only hesitation.
Right.
I don't think you can change it to a different project, so to speak.
But I think when, I think this becomes out as free cash, you might be able to use it, but I'm not sure. Whether it was bond or was borrowed money, so that may be the...
Yeah, I have to, there's, there is some sort of excess money that you can use, but I have to read up and, because we haven't done it yet and figured that out.
But that's, that's, that's what's going on. It's the difference between what the project cost us and what we borrowed. Is there anything else? Any other overtime for the public?
I have one question. Did you guys sign, or what happened with the auditors for next year? Did you guys sign the agreement?
That was signed contingent upon funding.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have any monies, we can't. We sent them, no, we said, contingent upon funding.
Okay.
In finance committee, we submitted a transfer, request for transfer, and they didn't respond, so I'm going to put it back in their box.
Transfer?
For, request for transfers to get the monies into the line item.
Because we only have five deposits.
Well, we might have to wait till the cash is certified and get it that way, but can we, can we schedule the audit, so that at least it's scheduled, and then we can always cancel it?
Oh, all right, you want to do that.
Huh?
Yeah, you want to schedule it with the understanding that it might get canceled because there's no funding.
Right, but we have, I mean, I'd like to see it scheduled in March, you know, the beginning of March.
We sent back the letter, didn't we say?
Uh-uh, I didn't send it back, and the reason why is because if we don't have the funding, you signed a contract.
But I thought we put it on subject upon funding.
Right, subject, you didn't put that on the contract. That's the thing.
So...
Well, although we wait, the later we're going to get pushed back if, when we try to get onto the schedule.
Well, we did sign the letter, or we intended to sign the letter, so if you want to schedule it with the understanding that you don't have funding, and if you don't get it, you're going to have to cancel it.
So you want me to schedule it?
I can do that.
We'll do that. I'm saying we, we in a generic sense.
Okay. I just don't want to, I just don't want to be doing it in May or June, you know, I want it to get done by... Because it's tough trying to spend all your time trying to do that and do other things that you, you know, trying to do some close stuff and that. Now, if I remember correctly, when we voted to do that five thousand dollars extra, the finance committee was going to fund that, correct? For the fire department, we investigated the fire department?
Yes.
So that technically, that five thousand could come out of reserve to pay for part of that. Because they would have you pay, they would have you use your expenses up first and then come to them for money afterwards, so since we already used it...
Are you talking finance committee?
Yeah.
They already were aware, because they had the conversation with the select board, that Donna and the financial advisor had recommended doing this, so we can improve the bond rating. And the finance committee were aware, and if I'm not mistaken, I think John Martin supported funding the audit, however, what, you know, he did not approve it on the paper, I don't know.
I, I guess what we need to do is schedule a meeting with finance.
Okay.
Because we now have another issue, our legal budget's going to go over, so...
Okay.
Why don't you, see if you can schedule something when I can come in.
Okay, and then maybe Vicki and Donna could attend as well? Would that, would you mind?
Yeah, I would appreciate that, that would be great. I guess what my point is...
Well, that meeting's in two weeks.
You can do it on the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Is that two?
There's a meeting on the twenty-sixth, so we'll skip up there first.
So, would, would you guys mind meeting with them at six-thirty? And then having them come down here, or would you rather them, they're meeting with you at seven o'clock on the twenty-sixth, and that's the only item?
Yeah, so I think we should meet on there, meet with them first at six, and first seven. We'll stay there for a minute on seven.
Okay, and then come down here?
And come down here.
Did Ed's, um, warrant ever get signed by finance committee, is that, I don't see it on here anymore.
The what?
Ed's, was it a change, personal?
Job, job description?
The change warrant?
Just posted it?
Yeah, it's been posted.
Did that paper get signed, though, but I remember waiting for it to go?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
It's all set, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks. Okay.
I was just wondering, the Sladers, you're here again. Quote the case with the chicken and...
I, I, are you asking about Brian Winter?
I'm asking about the Sladers.
Yeah, Mr. Winter, town council. Are you asking about the case?
I'm asking about the Slater's case, yeah.
Yeah, it's still, I have not heard anything. And every time I do hear something, I do, I do relay that back to Mr. and Mrs. Strader. I don't know what, I think he was waiting for the case, it should be happening in November, should be soon, if I'm not mistaken. The chickens, the chick, it should be happening in November, correct? I don't remember what that, that thing was.
No, it happened in November.
Yeah. Oh, it already happened? Oh, Mr. Winter did not report back, so I don't know.
What happened?
What happened?
Our town council thing to us?
No. You don't know either.
He has to be involved a lot, but he never told us anything.
He didn't tell me either.
Why don't you shoot up the request to town council, who's had, asked for a report on that case?
Okay.
I talked to Joe Fair today, different lawyer within town council, obviously wouldn't even know that was going on, but knowing, we should, I should have asked, I didn't think of...
Okay.
Anything else from anybody? All right, just for clarification sake, we're going, we need, finance committee transferred for what now?
Nineteen five.
Nineteen five for the audit?
That's for the audit.
But how's that broken down?
Sixteen five was for the actual audit, and then they had an additional three thousand that say it may go up to an additional three thousand.
With that audit, what about?
For that audit.
What about the fire department?
That one's already paid for.
That one's done?
Yeah.
How much money do you have?
Five hundred dollars is left in that account.
Five hundred dollars left in that account?
I had funded five thousand dollars, and I, I believe I had asked Vicki to carry forward two thousand, but I'm still researching that one.
How about our legal budget, what is legal?
That I don't know.
You don't have a talk to that?
I do not. Can I send that to you?
Anything else, people?
No, sir.
I take a motion, we can...
I move to adjourn.
Oh, stop. I forgot. Remember a couple weeks ago, the school committee came to us looking for endorsement of a community involvement grant kind of thing, and they put it together, and I need to authorize a sign up.
Okay, good. And it's on the agenda? It's on the agenda, perfect.
Wow, perfect. I know. So I need, this is for the computer system, the camera?
The CIC grant, is that right, the CIC grant?
Yeah, the CIC.
So I motion to sign the CIC grant.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Stop that before.
There we go.